Of this meeting is to fill vacancy. The Board of Aldermen will vote to elect a registered voter as Alderman in the Second Ward of the City of Ansonia in accordance to Section 143 of the City Charter. Would everybody please stand for the pledge to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
For the United States of America. And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call please?
Alderman Stowe.
Here.
Alderman Phipps.
Here.
Alderman Rasslin. Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Genetti. Alderman Rollo. Alderwoman Stroman.
Here.
Alderman Yowman. Alderman Rivers.
Yeah.
Alderman Mamon.
Here. That's not me, the dog barking.
Alderman Schuer.
Here.
Alderman Blackwell. Alderman De Libro.
Here.
I have 11 of the 14.
Okay, we have a quorum. We have a quorum. Number three is consideration and acceptance of the resignation of Terrick Rasslin. What is your pleasure?
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Election of the Second Ward Alderman pursuant to Section 143 of the Ansonia Charter. Are there any nominations for Second Ward at this time?
Mayor Cassetti.
Nominate Bobby Tar.
Do I have a second?
Yeah, I second that nomination, Mayor.
Are there any other nominations for Aldermen in the Second Ward? Are there any other nominations for Aldermen in the Second Ward? A third and final time, are there any other nominations for Second Ward Aldermen? Having none, I'll close the nominations. All those for Bobby Tar, Second Ward Aldermen, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained? Congratulations, Bobby. Are you there?
I'm here. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Aldermen. Look forward to working with you.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge according to law your duties as Second Ward Aldermen to the best of your abilities to help you guide.
I will.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Congrats, Bobby.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Number five, I would make an adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Slow Chicago, come on.
Yeah, I know, right?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Great. I guess.
I'd like to call to order the regular virtual full board meeting for October 13th, 2020. Please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call.
Alderman King. Alderman Joe.
Here.
Alderman Phipps.
Here.
Alderwoman Tar.
Here.
Alderman Cassetti.
Here.
Alderman Genetti.
Here.
Alderman Spigarolo. Alderwoman's.
Here. Here.
Alderman Yowman.
Here.
Alderman Rivers.
Yeah.
I'm frozen. I'm gonna keep going. Alderman Mamon.
Here.
Alderman Schuer.
Here.
Here.
Alderman De Libro.
We've got 13 present and one absent.
Who's absent?
Spigarolo.
Okay, alright. You got King. Okay.
I have King, yep.
Perfect, thank you. Declare quorum. Before we move to the public session, I wanted to add two items to the agenda. You got both of them. I'd like to add late communications number one and two. I get a motion by Alderman Cassetti.
Second.
Second by Alderman Rivers. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying? Alright, thank you. We'll pick those up later. Alright, public session. Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? We'll try to navigate digital hands, real hands. Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? Board it out?
Yeah.
Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? Any hands up? Third and final call. Anyone from the public wish to speak tonight? Okay. Public session is closed. Consideration of previous minutes. We have one set of minutes. We received the amended September 8th. Regular meeting. Motion to approve?
Motion to accept the amended minutes.
Second.
Motion by Mamon and second by Eddie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'm abstaining, I wasn't present.
Any abstentions?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Ask people to mute their, if they're not talking, mute.
Yes. If you're online, please mute yourself unless you're one of the Aldermen.
You entered nine, eight.
Or we'll mute you.
Four, six, five, four. This meeting ID is not exist. Please reenter your meeting.
What?
Who is that?
Goodbye.
Bill, are you having trouble?
Can't tell. The vote went away.
Yep.
Alright, so we had one abstention. Yowman, anyone else abstaining from the minutes? Alright, thank you. Moving on. Public official session. Mayor Cassetti.
President Schuer, members of the Board of Aldermen, residents of the great city of Ansonia. Good evening. Well, I guess you can say it's Miller time. I want to welcome our newest employee to the city. Of Ansonia, Kurt Miller officially begun his duties as Chief Financial Officer today. His first priorities will be working on a strategic financial plan for presentation later on this year and preparing our upcoming yearly budget process. Glad to have you aboard, Mr. Miller. I look forward to seeing you bright and early at 4:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. Now, please join me in congratulating Ansonia's own Polka Pete Donelcheck on 50 years in the broadcasting industry. Pete was recognized recently by the International Polka Association for his accomplishment, and I think it's only right that we roll out the barrel for him as well. A key to the city is on its way to Mr. Donelcheck to commemorate his proof positive passion for polka. Now, I want everyone to be on the lookout for development process in Ansonia. Demolition and renovation at the ATP Palmer Buildings will be moving into high gear next week with the outfitting of commercial space. The old SHW facility is being prepped for demolition and be prepared for a new restaurant coming into the old Eddie's Bake Shop location. A contract was just signed for, well, I can't say just now. However, I will say that this year's taco eating contest will be held on Main Street Ansonia. And finally, I want to congratulate Bobby Tar on her election as the new Second Ward Alderman. Bobby is one of the toughest and most hardest working people I know. I have no doubt that she will serve her constituents well. Now, I ask that you keep this meeting short for Mr. Miller's sake. He might not be used to hearing about so much progress in one single night. Please be safe. God bless you and God bless the city of Ansonia.
Thanks, Mayor.
Next up, Corporation Counsel, John Marini. And John, note that the Aldermen are muted. I don't, I can't, I can't.
They should be able to unmute themselves.
Okay.
If you're muted now and you need to speak, you should be able to unmute yourself. If not, send me a direct message and we could try to resolve the issue.
Thank you.
It's fixed. Thanks.
Mr. President, it's definitely the season for tax appeals. You see that on your agenda. And while there's no action required in any tonight, this is simply the time where tax appeals become due, and we're going to be working to defend the city against multiple appeals to dispute assessments and the taxes that result from them. So that's just an FYI. Additionally, like I've said many times, it's a season for union negotiations, and we're negotiating five separate unions spanning generally three to four different departments right now. So we're up to our ears in negotiation meetings and planning meetings, crunching numbers, and you're gonna hear a lot more on that as we move forward for both myself and eventually finance, once decision-making time comes around. So those are the two big things on our radar legally. Sheila's gonna talk a little bit more about some development projects, but I'll take any questions other than that.
Any questions for Corporation Counsel tonight? Alright, thank you.
Hold on, I was trying to get mine out, sorry. On the appeal, Corporation Counsel Marini, on the appeals, what's, how will we know like the outcome of those? Will we, will we get any sort of update on those or?
So if there's any possibility for settlement, we'll have to come to the Board of Aldermen for authorization. For example, there is an offer on for tonight, an executive session from an older tax appeal stemming from the 2018 grand list year. If we defend the case successfully, likely you won't receive much of a notice. And if there's an order from the court, that's certainly something I can share if a court, you know, if the case basically goes to trial and there's an outcome. And it certainly is going to be reflected in the assessor's report.
Sure.
As adjustments that are made after the effect, basically assessments that end up lower than anticipated. And every year, there are, of course, those cases that either settle or that are simply resolved by the court for a lower value. And of course, there are ones that are outright dismissed and won by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Corporation Counsel? Alright, thank you. Moving on. Economic Development Director, Sheila O'Malley.
Good evening, President Schuer, members of the Board of Aldermen. A few things to report on. On, we did put on the city's website the plans and specs for the East Main Street renovation project. We are, we intend to go forward with that project. And public, public notice has been sent out. An ad appeared in the paper Thursday and Friday of last week. The public and anybody who wishes to comment can do so by Monday, October 26th, where we'll take all comments into consideration. Did have a email discussion with Chief Cota, who had asked about streetlights and how far down where we were going with the decorative street lamps. And I've asked the engineers to include a price for going all the way down, Chief, to, I don't know if you're on the line, but all the way down to the police station so that it's all integrated and hopefully that will, that will be included in the project. Again, you know, we're picking up 120 additional spaces in preparation for the work that's being done to, to go forward with the residential units on, at 497 East Main and 153 Main Street. The mayor mentioned those properties. Interior demolition has already been occurring over the past few weeks. I think about, I don't know, Mike De Lassio knows better, but maybe about 20 dumpsters have already been filled and carted off with work continuing, especially concentrating on the 153 Main Street and the former senior center. Thank you, Jeff and Public Works and Mike De Lassio and all the people working hard to get all of the stuff moved out of that senior center. The developers are gonna be working on a retail spot, and I'm glad the mayor didn't mention it in his, in his brief comments about what it's going to be. So that's exciting and that's ongoing. Again, the public notice and the plans and specs for East Main Street are on our website. I have right here the, I don't know if you, can you see it? No. Okay. Well, anyway, North End Economic Recovery Municipal Development Plan, the long awaited plan for the Ansonia Copper and Brass Site and surrounding properties. It's a very, very long and detailed report, hundreds of pages, and we will put that, we'll put the link, access to the link on our website. It's going to, it does include environmental conditions, marketability study report, a project boundary description, topographic conditions, current, present condition and reuses of the land, types and locations of existing streets, sidewalks and utilities, description of the land uses and the proposed land uses for the project area. So quite comprehensive. I haven't even listed everything, soils, report, acquisition activities, title searches, financing plan, et cetera. So that will be available for the public to view. And also, at next month's meeting, probably have the engineers come in, present to the Board of Aldermen so that you can, you know, completely understand what's, what this plan is and means to everyone. A bit of good news from the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development in that we've been asked to make full application. There's a pre-application that you make. We've been asked to make full application. It's a total of, between the two applications, $750,000 for more cleanup money and more demolition money. So awaiting, we will submit the full application and awaiting a response on that. Mayor mentioned a new restaurant. Actually, there'll be two new spots on Main Street, and we'll have more in the coming weeks. I think that's it for now.
Any questions for Economic Development? Sheila O'Malley? Yes? Diane?
One, Sheila, can you briefly, just very briefly, explain why, because I had a couple of people ask me and I could not answer them, why in the, in the specs that you put out for the East Main Street, why is part of that East Main Street going to be one-way?
What we're trying, what we're trying to do with East Main Street is pick up parking capacity and also slow down traffic so that when the residential units are built out, it'll be more conducive to residents who will be living there and parking there. Right now, actually, you kinda have a, well, it's like a race strip with, you know, with no parking on a very wide street, and the mayor knows how wide it is. I won't, I won't throw out a number, but, so the intention is to make it more pedestrian-friendly, to pick up parking spaces and to accommodate the residential units coming online.
And we know that parking is essential for any private business, practically speaking, but also zoning-wise. So remember that commercial can count public parking spaces towards their parking requirements, and so adding on additional spaces is going to help commercial development in the area.
And they'll be able to park on both sides of the street, the way that's gonna work?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And the other, Sheila or John or both of you, would you please give the, the Board a report on the status of the senior center?
Yep, I can, I can give you a status on that. We've, as you may know, we've been talking to Mike Marsnick, who had originally done some design work for the senior center at the police station.
You brought it over to Jake?
I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Thought somebody had a question.
I can go, Jessica Rogue, I have to, let's see if we can mute him. Go ahead.
So Mike has, with that, we've asked Mike to give us a scope, you know, based on, on square footage and what that, and what that would look like and what that would, cost out would be. And we've also suggested that Mike, um, okay, we all saw it. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have a question or, okay. So we've also asked Mike to give us a scope, which he actually did just give us about an hour ago, and I have not had a chance to take a look at it. But we've also been working with Brian Humes, who gave us an initial cost estimate but did not, did not give us anything further beyond that, as we have not requested it from him. But we're trying to cost out space and square footage, Diane, so that we know exactly what we have, what we need going forward. And we want to get moving on the design as quickly as possible.
You may want to mention about the dollars.
Yep, so it looks like the cost estimate for somewhere between 4,000 and 5,000 square feet would be about 500,000. If it's gonna be 10,000 square feet and there's an additional 5,000 square feet, then it's gonna cost an additional, and I don't want to make a, I don't want to make a prediction right now, but, you know, assuming 5,000's gonna cost you 500,000, 10,000 will cost a million. So we were, we were looking at phasing in the senior center, doing a 5,000 square foot project and going as far as our money will take us, and then adding on as we anticipate getting some money for capital projects.
And a 10,000 square foot senior center obviously has the ability to support far more than ever planned for our own city center. So this open up, opens up an avenue for regionalization and with it, the potential of support from an additional community. And so we're keeping that in mind in the design. Obviously, our first priority is making sure the Ansonia seniors have a senior center. But the, the idea of being able to cooperate together with a neighboring community and increase dramatically the size of the senior center downtown is a great option. So we essentially want a plan that will get us to where we need to be for the Ansonia seniors, but that builds out the possibility of additional funding potentially from another community or from another source, for example, a grant, and that gets us to a full 10,000 square feet, which again, would be phenomenal for the seniors. So Mike obviously has a lot of, has had a lot of input in the process so far, and we're gonna wait on a report back from him and Brian Humes as to how to get there, a roadmap of how to get there. And Diane, the seniors are definitely gonna be a part of that, and you'll be wrapped in as well, once he has his report, as will the whole board.
And I just, you know, just a, sort of a very general schedule. If, you know, if the design, the design could be finished by December or January, early January, you could have bids out and back in February and you could begin construction in springtime. Although that, you know, that's a rough estimate.
I've got some comments, if I may.
Go ahead, Bill.
The first thing regarding the one-way street, I believe, it's my understanding at least, that before an alteration is made to a city's street, it's gotta get the blessings of the Board of Aldermen. Reading the charter, that's a significant change to a street, and I think we have to approve it before anything goes forward.
It was approved, Bill, but yes.
Approved by the Board of Aldermen?
Yes.
Alright, I'd appreciate it if you could give me the specific meeting where that was done, because I don't recall it.
Yeah, it's been, it's been quite some time, and I don't know that you were, you were on the board at the time.
No, I wasn't. I wasn't. I, I remember sitting at a police commission meeting, oh, back when Kevin was still here, and Donnie Smith showed up with a proposal that the traffic commission.
Yes.
Much adopted, but I detected that there were some concerns that were to be verbalized, and it never happened, of course, because there was a change of, change of ownership in the police department. But, because I know that that street used to have angular parking for years.
Yes. That's right.
It was filled up every day by the employees of Farrell, so.
Yeah, I have pictures of them parking there. Parking, parking on the side.
It was two-way at the time?
That whole street was filled, and the entire park was filled every day. I could, we would call, scratching our heads, trying to figure out where we were gonna park the people that were employed there, because it was, well, it was a different day. But I have some reservations, just general, on going one-way, but let's see how it plays out.
Okay.
To do what we gotta do, I'm just concerned about, well, anyway. And my other observation is with the senior center, and I was under the impression that the senior center was going to be part of the three and a half million dollar ad that the Board did for us, you know, back a couple of months ago. And as far as I'm concerned, the seniors, well, from what I'm hearing, and it's rumor, but it's my expectation that when we give the keys to the building, to the police department, that the senior center executive board will also get a set of keys. At least I hope that's the way it's gonna go. But I'm hearing tonight, dance routines being talked about, and it makes me just a little nervous that things are not going as planned, you know. Anyway, I just, just putting it out there from what I've heard, and hopefully everything will come to pass and everybody will be happy, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Economic Development? Sheila?
No, I just, can I just, just want to say, just add one thing, but we have been working on it, but you need to know that this executive board of the seniors are not happy about the process, because it's been coming along very slowly. And also to hear that, and we knew going in, when we talked about the referendum, I don't know if you guys remember, I said that we were told there wasn't gonna be enough money, and we probably needed to add more money in for the referendum. And now, we're, we're, we're talking about being phased in and trying to find the money for it. So this process is, is, we're not happy about it. Hopefully, it's all gonna work itself out, but you need to know that we're not, it's taking much longer than we thought it would take, and many of the seniors on executive committee were, again, they're not just expressing the fact that we're not happy about the process. So hopefully, with Kurt Miller being on board, that it'll move a lot faster than where it is, and we'll be able to find the money to finish off the, off the project. And I'm not saying that Sheila and John's not doing their job, I'm just saying that we knew upfront, we were told early on that we probably weren't gonna have enough money for the project, so why we didn't put money in the referendum for it, it's still beyond me. But anyway, enough said.
Any other questions for Economic Development? Alright, thank you, Sheila.
Okay, thank you.
So moving on to finance update, is Kim, Kim Bastefano? It's Kim's here, I saw her before. She's not. We have, Kim was here, she's not now. Rich is here, Kurt's here.
Kim is there, Josh.
Oh, she is? Maybe she's, oh, she moved, okay.
Got it under Fred's iPhone.
There you go. Kim? She's unmuted. I don't see her, but I see her name. Kim? How about Rich?
Unmute him.
He's unmuted.
Good evening, everyone.
How you doing, Rich?
I'm doing well, thank you. Finance is continuing on. We've got the new infinite vision system has been being worked on, a lot more.
Lot more complicated than we thought, but we're working the best we can to get every, everything going, moving forward. We're working on last year's audit, so we're trying to combine the two pieces. We've had one of our staff members move across to the payroll function to pick up the pieces on the payroll from one of our people that has left. And we just continue to process through day by day. So at this time, pretty much status quo, doing the things that are coming to the top of the pile. And there are some things that are dropping down that we haven't got to.
Great. Any questions for finance from the Aldermen?
Kim having a problem with their audio, so that's why she just texted me.
Okay.
I've got one, Josh.
Go ahead.
The, and it's just an observation. I've noticed that the account numbers that are coming out of the new system are, what are they? About 12 digits long? Is that right, Rich?
They might be longer.
Those are suckers, those are, those are numbers.
We converted to the new system. It was, we made the determination to update our account number structure to that of the uniform chart of accounts with the state of Connecticut, right? Prior to this, we had to run our, all of our accounting through a converter to put it into the proper account number structure. But every year, every, every municipality is required to submit their ledger data from the prior year to the state for use with the uniform chart of accounts. And, and so, yeah, it's going to be a little complicated. The book that we don't have out to you, the budget book, we actually did it with the old account number and showing the new account number and the new account number showing the old account number. We've just haven't had the time to get it all printed out and get them assembled. But yes, the account number structure has changed and it's.
But there is some logic to it that we'll eventually figure out.
Yes, we took it right from the state's listing of the uniform chart of accounts.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for finance? Thank you, Rich, for stepping up. Also, I just wanted to congratulate Kurt. Thanks for coming aboard. Welcome to Ansonia. We won't put you on the hot seat yet.
Thank you for having me.
Yep.
It was, it was a good first day. I had an opportunity to talk to a bunch of people. We're starting to put some plans in place. And I'll have a large presentation for the Aldermen at your November meeting on direction and planning and things like that.
Thank you, welcome again. Thanks to all you guys for working together. Police Chief Coda, I saw him here earlier as well. Are you unmuted, chief?
I am here and I am unmuted.
How you doing?
Good, good, good evening, everyone. A couple of quick notes, as we get toward the end of the month in October, we're preparing for Halloween. Make sure our staffing is appropriate for anything that may occur on October 30th or 31st as, as we do each year to make sure everything is safe. Although we're dealing with COVID, it does not mean that people will not be out going places. We've got some in-house training that we're working on to try to get completed before the end of the year. That's almost complete. We have an officer, I would just notify last week, an officer, one of ours is going to be leaving. She's actually moving to another state with her family. So we anticipate an opening at the end of the, end of the month that we're working on. So that will go with my next point here is that we're working on the hiring process, going through certified and uncertified applications to see what the next step is for us. And then our detective division has been, been busy working on some of the major cases, working with the court system to get things prepared, updated and sent over to court so they can continue on with these major cases that we've been working on throughout the course of the year. And in addition, our building is progressing. As you won't really see on the inside of the third floor is moving along quite well. You can see some of the structural steel that's been put on the outside of the building. That portion of the building is a little bit, a little bit further behind on the schedule due to some soil issues that they had. But we are working with Banton Construction and moving along, setting up the next phase, which will probably be our, our technology people setting up their schedules to get in there to run cables and IT items and such as they need to. So we're working on that and keeping that project moving forward as we speak. And I believe that's all that I have for you at this point.
Great, any questions for the chief?
Can you unmute me? Can you unmute me?
You're not muted. Head.
Chief.
I'm clear, Charlie.
Soil problems, what did you mean by that?
So when, when they dug up the area, when they excavated for the area for the tower, there had to be testing and stuff and that was, that was delayed. It took a while for the results to get back, if I understand. There's, there's not problems now, but they had to get all of that tested. So that's what delayed the process before they could actually get in there, then get it compacted or whatever, however they do it, test it and then build the footings to build the tower.
Was it a compaction issue or was it a pollution issue?
I don't know if it was a compaction issue. I think it was issues, they were trying to find out what was in the soil. They needed to have that tested to make sure they excavated the proper amount of area to be able to put the footings in, to make sure that we're going to be no further issues.
It's about as good as I'm going to get, huh?
I, that's the, the best I can, I can tell you, other than they, they came back with all of the results. Sheila may be able to answer more. Everything was found out to be within limits or okay, and they began to build the, the tower.
Wasn't the building to be completed in February? Is that, was that your date? Was that, was that your February, right?
That's what we were, that's what the hopes are. We are waiting to get a build-out schedule to find out. As I said, there's a delay on the outer portion, the interior, the third floor is moving along. That is going well. We are working or waiting for the company to give us the, the rest of the information so we can get a better, a firm date on there. So we're, we're moving along on that. But I don't have an exact date, I can't tell you. It's, it's February, it's March, it's April, I don't have an exact date yet.
Yeah, we're working, right, chief. We're working on the schedule right now, because we just got a new proposed schedule from Banton and then want to figure out what's their responsibility, what's, what was unforeseen circumstances. That parking lot is, I don't want to, I don't, I mean, it's very contaminated underneath. To what extent, we didn't anticipate some of the soil that was dug up, excavated. An additional soil had to be removed. So that cost, that cost time and money. But I think we've, we've gotten that resolved and we're back on schedule. And as the chief said, they've been continuing to work on the inside. In fact, we're going to do a tour of that, of the PD buildings. And I think people be quite surprised at the progress they've made.
Hey Sheila, I'm sorry to go backwards, but when the senior center goes out to bid?
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there some way to have the turnkey bid on that?
Like a, are you talking about it like a design?
Design build.
That's possible, yeah, that's possible.
You know, we got, we're starting to expand with our projects.
Yes.
I think we don't, you know, we can get into chaos very easily and we definitely don't want that.
Agreed.
Okay, just a thought, thank you.
consideration, thank you.
Any other questions for the chief tonight?
Yes, I have a question.
I have one.
Bunch of them. Alderman Rivers and then we'll go to Alderman Mamon. Go ahead.
Have we made any progress on Jackson Street about getting the, the parking on the other side? This has been going on now for, I don't know, probably about three years now.
As, as far as what, for the, for the winter parking or the normal one-sided parking? I believe that was discussed with the, the commission over the past couple of years, but there's, there's no recommendation at this point that I'm aware of to move parking to one side of the street.
Okay, because I just got a, got an email from the same people. The problem is, and I think that you will recall this, is that once they switch over, if they switch over, I think to the yard side, it's less parking because it's more driveways. And the first part of Jackson already have that one-sided parking all year round.
Yeah, I, I would have to go up there to, to review it. So is, are you, are you saying there's a request into the, to the police, police commission for looking at one-sided parking?
Yeah, this has been going on for a while now.
Yeah, I, I'm aware that that's, that's been a request. It's something why we can look at. If you can forward that email to me, we can take a look at it.
Okay.
All right, yes, sir.
Thank you, Chicago. Alderman Mamon had a question?
Yeah, hey chief, regarding the vacancy, I, I know we, you just mentioned the one for the, for the officer that's moving out of state. Do we have any other vacancies that you're looking to fill right now, other than this one?
Yes, yes, I have two others. So it went, once this officer leaves, I'll be, I'll be up to, well, I'll be, I'll be up to three that I'm working.
And what's, what's your potential to fill those timely?
Well, it depends. If we can get certified, we can reduce the time. It's obviously getting officers that are interested in transferring to other departments. So that varies. That could be a month or two to a couple of months. If you're looking at from new hire, you'd have to complete the academy and then the 12 or 13 weeks of field training after that. So that, that you're coming up on close to about a year when you're all said and done with it.
Okay.
Chief, what does, what does the academy look like right now for Ansonia?
So the academy, it varies, because there's multiple ones that we're able to use. We kind of reach out, we think we're going to have people that are going to be uncertified to go in. There's hybrids, there's some that are still doing in, in classroom. And then there's others that are doing some online, for, for lack of a better term, online for a portion of it. And then they go in and they do some of their hands-on stuff at the academies. So we would, we reach out to the different police academies and find out what their timelines are and try to fit into their, most likely, there'll probably be one that, one or two that may begin toward the end of the year or the early part of next year. It's generally the schedule. But it also depends on needs. If larger departments, generally, we do with, deal with Waterbury, it's been the last couple of times. They do a couple of classes a year, so we try to jump on with them. They're pretty accommodating to let us get officers up there.
Thank you. Any other questions for the chief? All right, thank you, chief. I see that Superintendent DeBaco, Dr. DeBaco is here. And I had asked him if he would speak and make himself available to answer any questions that anyone has regarding how school year is going at any front. So, Dr. DeBaco, it's all you.
All right, well, thank you. And also, I would like to extend a welcome to Kurt Miller as well.
I got it.
So the school year, we have opened successfully and as safely as possible. We opened up in a, in a hybrid model, which has an A and B cohort. We are at the six-week, I guess, benchmark. Where according to our reopening plan, we said that we would reassess our situation and see if we would, you know, change, change course. It could be stay hybrid, go all-in, go all-remote. And we just got a preliminary survey back today. Tonight was the, just the, the ending, the end night or the last day for that, for parents to get back to us. And I could easily tell you everything we've done is in regards to health and safety. So our district medical advisor said, these are the biggest caveats moving forward. It depends on if we can safely space our students. If we were to go back and also briefly looking at the survey, many people really would like to wait after flu season before they were to go to in, in all-in model. A lot of people said, you know, why don't we keep it where we are right now? We've had two incidents where we've had two COVID positive results, where we've been able to, to actually just isolate cohorts and cohorts in student. Nogatuck Valley Health District has been unbelievably helpful in assisting us and so has our district medical advisor. Anything that we do is based on what, what they tell us to do. And just so I can also tell Aldermen or the public, what the health department says to us is, they look at direct contacts, a direct contact is anyone who's been in close contact with less than six feet for 15 minutes or longer. Anything after that would be considered a contact of a contact. And then we have to, where do you stop going back? Otherwise, people start to generally worry. So what they tell us is only look at direct contacts. And actually, they only look at direct contacts when they do contact tracing and they tell us how far back to go and how to move forward. So that's where we are. I know academically and ideally, five days a week is the greatest thing. I also know five days a week for childcare and otherwise is, is ideal as well. But we're going to try to move forward with health and safety in mind. And also, health and safety first, but also in the back of our mind, how much is this costing at the end of the day? But health and safety is number one, and that's where we are. And I'm open to any questions I could, I could answer for the Aldermen.
Are there any questions from the Aldermen for the superintendent?
Yes, I have.
Joe, and then Charlie?
Just a comment, superintendent. You have a Ms. Chen that works with your students. I just wanted to give an ad a boy for her. She's done marvelous things with the children, getting them to go to school, the ones that are difficult. There are difficulties, we all know this, with the situation being the way it is and children being children, the way they are. We need, we need professionals that know how to deal with the situations at hand. And I just wanted to give you a thank you for Ms. Chen.
Absolutely, I'll share that.
Thank you.
Joe, Charlie?
Joe, so how, how are the parents doing with dealing with this? You know, as far as taking care of their kids and what they're having to go through as far as work and whatever? Have you heard, you know, heard any issues from any of the parents? Or are they going along smooth or what do you think?
I'm going to first tell you, if my wife is any barometer, the answer is, it's not so great all the time. I only look at it, I have a seven-year-old, a five-year-old and an 18-month-old. And it's, it's a challenge a lot of times. But what I have heard is, for example, we have a, a woman who's on, on our board. Her, her child's in second grade. We have some of the best and some of the most engaging remote teachers. Like, I'm excited for them, because we did, we're able to get some teachers who are teaching our students who are remote. I do know that there are some technological challenges. Technology is, is difficult, something that's been thrown, you know, thrust upon us. But I, I would say the parents have been unbelievably flexible and understanding. And the teachers and administrators have availed themselves to help out, because it's something that we realize it's, it's a really tough situation. So what I would say right now, even though some people are frustrated beyond belief, if they sit and they, if they ask the teacher or the, the administrators there, like I know, for example, Prendergast is having some parents come in and they're doing small, you know, group lessons with parents so they could better help their kids with their, with technology. And so it's, it's not perfect by any, any means. But you know what? You know, true Ansonia fashion, everyone's stepping up and, and helping out. And it's, even though parents are frustrated, they, as long as you reach out to the, to the school, you can get help. You reach out to Facebook, that doesn't help you much. But when you reach out to the school, we could help you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Other questions for the superintendent?
Yes, I do, I have one.
Go ahead, Chicago.
Hey Joe, how you doing?
How are you?
Two things, I just want to say that you and the team is doing a very good job. I mean, I've, I've heard all good things about it. Do you foresee all kids going back to school this year all day, a full week?
So it's a funny thing, I, I floated some of the, that exact same question, moving forward. Almost in a, in a question to see, is there any incentive for us to move forward? But also, is the state ever going to remove the ability for parents to volunteer? ability for parents to voluntarily, um, opt into remotes? And what I was told unofficially is that as, until there is a viable vaccine, they're always, they're going to let, you know, parents have the ability to keep their child home. So that being said, I, I don't foresee us until we have a viable, um, vaccine moving forward to every student comes in every day. Um, moving forward, completely valid because I asked the same exact question. I didn't know if the state was going to say at a certain point, every, everyone has to go back, your infection rates at, at this percentage moving forwards. We're, we're going to move everyone in, but I was told until there's a viable vaccine, they're not going to, uh, we won't see every student in every day.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for the superintendent tonight? Last call. All right. Thanks, Dr. DeBaco for coming tonight.
Josh, if any question, anyone has questions, please reach out and I'll, I'll help as best I can.
All right. Thank you again. Uh, I think so ends, uh, the public official session. We can move on to, uh, committee reports. Uh, finance committee. Charlie, take it away.
I'm still taking it away.
Yeah.
Hey, all bills just proved to be right. Right?
Second. Second by Alderman Mamon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Extensions. Perfect. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh, are there any other, um, committee reports that anyone wants to make? Um, I know we have, uh, Joe for the regional, uh, school study committee. Is there, is there any other, before we do that, are there any other committee reports?
Josh, can I back, can I back us up a second?
Yes.
We didn't, we didn't cover Public Works.
Yeah, I didn't see him here. Cause Mike.
I'm going to get him on the phone.
Okay.
Had a, we haven't had a public works meeting for quite some time.
Okay. If he comes on, I'll put him on. I, I scanned through and I didn't see him before I moved on.
He said he'd be on tonight, so I don't know what happened, but I'm, I'm getting him. Hold on. Standby.
Can I ask, uh, the, our attorney something while we wait?
Sure. Wrap it into a committee report and go ahead. Go ahead.
Um, Ja- John Sheila, when the, uh, WUPCA got paid from the, um, housing authority?
Yes, they did. Uh, simultaneous track, check transfer occurred.
Simultaneous exchange finally occurred in keeping with the agreement between the two parties. Took a while, but we got there.
Is there, is there a yearly amount going to be exchanged or given to us or?
Yeah, it's about a pilot.
The agreement should resolve the pilot payment.
We haven't yet.
No, the, the agreement that you've, that, that was entered into should resolve it going forward.
Okay.
So the answer is yes. There should, there's an agreement, the pilot payment going forward that will be received. The payment taxes.
Thank you.
All right. Is, is Mike here now?
You know.
Um, I don't, I, I don't think that he's going to come because, um, I actually seen him at, um, Med Express. So, um, something happened. I didn't, I didn't talk to him, but, but I seen him in.
Yes, that's, that's right, Chicago. But I think, I think I got, Mike, can you answer some questions for the alderman?
Yes.
Are you okay?
Well, I just got out from, uh, the doctor.
Mike, Mike, you okay? Uh, can you, can you stand by Josh?
Sheila, give him a, if he's not feeling well, Sheila, give him a pass. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Um,
I did, I, I did see him there. So that's why I kind of figured he wasn't going to, um, be on tonight if he was there.
10 minutes later, we could have gone to where I was, which was moving on the agenda, but anyhow.
Give him the night off.
When you guys complained at the end, how long it was, I'm just going to remind you about the 10 minutes we just blew. Are there, are there any, uh, any other update committee reports that anyone wants to, any of the aldermen want to, uh, update us on? Now.
I can't, uh, Josh, I can't say for the good, uh, Mr. President of the, of the board, um, an update for planning and zoning that I think would be of interest. Um, as you may know, there was an application for a solar farm to be put in on a hilltop area. And I've been talking with planning and zoning and we will be filing an application to intervene in that matter. Um, so you better understand it, it's not an application that's pending with the city of Ansonia. It's an application that's pending with the state's citing council. So the city actually does not have authority over approval or denial of the project. But we are attempting to intervene in the application so we could raise local concerns at the eventual hearing. For example, concerns on behalf of, um, local zoning, local health and safety, our police department, fire departments, um, to, to issues like wetlands. And I'll give you more information as we go forward on that. But I, I know this, that solar application has been a matter of interest for our residents and our officials. And I just wanted to let you guys know that we are, uh, taking formal steps to insert ourselves into that process to make sure the citing council makes an informed decision, uh, with the city and its residents being represented. I just didn't mention that in my update, but I think it's important for you to know.
Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Um, all right, let's move on to, uh, Alderman Yamman. I know you have a, an update for us on the regional school study committee.
I do. We've been making some steady progress. Uh, we have the, uh, the, the annual or the biannual, I should say, um, report that we submitted. Um, you guys should have gotten it with your packet. It gives you the general synopsis of where we are. But we've been making some pretty steady progress, um, over the last, I would say, six to eight meetings. Um, we've actually narrowed, um, sort of the scope down. Um, at the last meeting, we made some headway removing, um, it took a while. We had to get some stats and we had to get some feedback from the consultants, but the Derby, essentially what, what, what the nine through 12 scenario has sort of been removed from the equation. Um, as no longer really being feasible, uh, for both communities. So we're, we're down to a six through 12 and then the, uh, the PK, uh, through 12 scenarios with both three elementary school and four elementary schools. As we continue to sift through the data and have, um, discussions with our, uh, equals over there in Derby. Um, it's looking a, a more and more, um, it's coming down to economics and, and sort of where we are. Uh, I expect a, a, a longer meeting, probably with a lot of information. Everybody's been sort of asked to re-review, um, the 170 page report that we got about a year ago, uh, in preparation for our meeting at the end of the month. So that's kind of where we are. We're moving on to really the finance, the equalization and then the governance, um, administration aspects of it. Um, we've gotten through enrollment. We've, we've tentatively approved, um, basically the educational plans. Um, and as the, with finance and equalization comes facilities, and then we'd move on to governance. So that's kind of an update. I still, I invite all of you guys to come, um, and any input you guys have, if you want to, if you can't make the meetings and you have, uh, you know, comments or concerns that you want to, uh, express to myself or, um, to any of the other members as well. Um, I'd be happy to, you know, raise any comments or concerns you have at the, at those meetings. They're going on twice a month. Um, the fourth Monday of the, of the month, as well as the first Wednesday, I believe.
Right. Thank you, Joe.
I, I gotta, I have a, um, a question for Mr. Joseph John.
Does anybody else have comments?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So.
Yes, sir.
So now if I understand this right, um, nine through 12 is going to stay there?
No, nine through, so the, the, basically the scenarios that we were given to consider as to whether or not they were feasible for regionalization was a nine through 12. So basically just a joint regional high school, a joint regional middle and high school, and then a, a, a K through 12 scenario, either both with three elementary schools or four elementary schools. After the numbers came back and some discussions, uh, with the members in Derby, um, and sort of some back and forth over about three or four different meetings and getting final, some final information. Um, basically what was, what was determined at the last meeting is that it's not really, um, a viable scenario for Ansonia, which we had expressed a while ago, but Derby came around to that conclusion, recognizing the fact that the, uh, I think it was the renovation cost at Derby High School would just simply be too expensive for a regional, um, for a nine through 12 scenario. So that's kind of, that's, that's kind of where the nine through 12 scenario, recognizing our need for a middle school and their need for a high school. So that's why, kind of how we got to six through 12.
Yeah, because, um, I, I, um, if I'm correct, I'm, I'm hearing that this year that they have, um, 58, um, that's supposed to be, uh, graduating as, um, seniors?
I don't, I don't know the enrollment numbers. I can say, I know last year was in the six, I think, I believe it was in the sixties. The year before that, I think it was 72.
Right, right.
Um, it could be that low with, you know, with, with, with everything that's going on in the school systems, it very well could be that low. I don't know, but, um, we're working off of 2019 numbers with our stats. So.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Joe. Uh, are, are there any other committee reports that I missed? Anyone want to pipe in? All right. Thank you. Uh, all right. So moving on to the municipal reports, start with the, uh, boat recommendations and controller approvals for September. Motion to accept those. Motion by Alderman Cassetti.
Second.
By Mamon. Uh, any discussion, any, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close. Extensions. All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Um, the land use report, um, for September 2020. Motion to accept that?
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Rivers, second by Alderman Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Stained. All right. And I just want to note that, um, they brought in $25,808.86 just in the, the month of September, um, in revenue.
Nice.
Um, and between July and September of 2020, they brought, they brought in so far, uh, $79,534.62. So they're doing a good job. All right.
You know, if that's a, hold on, do we know if that's a direct connection to the, I guess, online permits that we, um, upgraded to?
Uh, that I don't know. I can find that out. Um, my guess is that it wouldn't be, but I can, I can ask and, and see, see if there's been an uptick since, since that move.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's separate and apart. Ald, Alderman, Mamon.
Yeah, my guess, my guess, Tony, is that because, uh, there's a lot of, there's been some sales that some of the liens are being paid off.
Makes sense. Thanks.
All right. Thanks. Uh, and then the last, uh, you guys received in your packet, uh, the up, the, uh, update from the nature center. That's municipal report, uh, D. And just, I just want a motion to accept that. That was an update on what's going on there. Motion by Alderman Cassetti, second by Alderman Strom, Alderwoman Stroman, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Extensions. Perfect. Motion passes. Uh, all right, moving on. Um, the tax collector report and request for refunds. Uh, so you receive, um, a pretty extensive report, uh, from the tax collector. Um, and she has told me that if, if you ever have any questions on any of the specifics in there, uh, you notice that she's uh, given us more and more information each month and that was, um, Alderman Mamon has been asking for more data and we're getting it. So if you have any specific questions, she said she's happy to answer that. Um, you can ask through me or you can ask directly. But, uh, motion to accept the tax collectors' report this month?
Motion.
I have.
Motion by Alderman Cassetti, second by Alderman Janetti. Is there a question?
Yes. Can I just, I, I just had a couple of questions on the problem, problem account section, some clarification, but that may not be able to happen if she's not on the, if she's not here to answer the question. Um, on that particular document where it says problem accounts.
Yep.
Uh, one, if she could put the amount owed, add that to that, unless it cut off, um, I don't see it on my, my copy. Um, if she could add that to the report, that would be great. And the other question is where it says bankruptcy. Um, does that mean if somebody has bankruptcy, we cannot collect the money? I'm just trying to figure out, she has like the reason, um, the, the rest of the reason for a problem, but this is also mean that we will never be able to collect that money?
Okay. Um, my understanding in talking with her before last month, I believe it was, that that is the case for some of those. Some of these things are in this category and you can't just wipe them out and say, we're not going to be able to, um, you know, collect these, but they have to stay on there. And, uh, but I can ask for the amounts as you requested, and I can also follow up to, to get that answer on the bankruptcies as well. And I'll get that back for you before next month.
Right. Because executive, executive order seven S is not the one that Lamont did regarding COVID.
Yes.
Where people were protected. So that doesn't necessarily mean that they're, they don't have to pay us. It just means they get a
No, 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 no.
A pass right now.
Diane, these, these, hold on, hold on, hold on. These are accounts that have been, you know, in a problem status for years.
Yeah.
That's what I know.
Related. Not COVID related.
Seven S is just a deferment, um, that you're referring to. Um, so there's, there was a deferment program. Certain individuals are deferred. And of course there was the low interest portion of seven S. So this does not relate to those, um, those COVID related benefits.
So this does not?
Does not.
Okay.
It wa, but it was under that same seven S, but that was where we, we gave the two options. We had the, we had to give one and we gave both. If you recall.
Yeah, but some of these are bankruptcies from like 2014, 2015.
Yeah, that's.
Right. And she, and she was very clear that she's like, you know, it'd be great if I could just wipe those off the record and say, here's, here's what realistically I can get, but has to report these, that these, um, you know, that, so they stay on there for that reason, but I can follow up on those other questions you've had, Diane.
I don't believe generally municipal tax liens are wiped off of the bankruptcy.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I said, general, generally municipal tax liens are not always wiped off. It depends on the type of bankruptcy. They're not always wiped off. You may still have to pay depending on what's filed. It's, it stays the collection activity. Um, and you can't go and with, with the filing of a bankruptcy, you can't go and try to collect. But if they're, if these are 14, 2014, 2015 bankruptcies, even in a 13, and you're, you're stay, your period's going to be done. It's going to be exhausted at a maximum of like 60 months, your repayment. So it, it, the discharge, I mean, it's just a matter of finding out where the status of it is.
And, and the one that says wetlands, does anyone know what that means? There's one that says wetlands.
Is there a dollar amount associated?
No, I know.
Dollar amounts were cut off.
I remember from the last, the last report, the particular one that said wetlands was quite a bit of money.
Was there were wetlands violations?
So if you ask for that.
Yeah. I'll, I'll ask on that one too.
You will.
I, I don't want to speculate on stuff that I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I mean,
No problem.
I'll ask all those and I'll get back to you guys on, on all those questions. Good questions though. Okay, motion to, uh, we had a motion in a second. Um, all in favor to collect the, or to accept the tax report this month?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Stains. All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Um, we have the request for refunds. Um, we, you received an amended one, um, a short bit ago. The total is $5,135.58.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the refund report for the amended total of 5,135.58.
Second.
Alderman Mamon, second by, um, Alderwoman Stroman, all in favor?
Aye.
Close. Extensions. Nope. All right. Thank you. Okay. So as, uh, corporation counsel mentioned, um, there's a whole slew of claims related to, uh, tax appeals. Those are the, those are the solar ones that were listed on there. Um, there's a total of eight claims. Um, a motion to refer these to corporation counsel to deal with.
Yeah.
Motion by, um, Alderman Yamman and second by Alderman Rivers, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Extensions. All right. Thank you. All right. We have, um, three communications and then we have the, the two, um, late communications, uh, one and two as well. So let's go through those. Um, communication one was a letter, um, sent from David McDermott of DSR Properties LLC. This was the one that was a request to uh, purchase uh, a city-owned property uh, across the street from twenty-six South Street. Uh, and without spending too much time on this, um, I would, I would recommend that we refer this for an eight twenty-four, in which case the city planner will uh, have input on this and the building department and whatnot before we do anything with this.
Take the motion.
Target.
Motion by Alderman Stowe, second by Alderman Phipps, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Alright, thank you guys. Uh, communication two is a uh, letter from Jen, Jennifer Lester, the director of the library. Some happy news, we got some money for the library from the coronavirus relief funds. And she included in that um, communication, the press release uh, from Governor Lamont's office, and so I guess, um, you know, it's in your packet, other than reading it, um, motion to accept that communication?
Motion.
Motion by Alderman Stowe, second by Alderman Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions, alright, thank you.
Gosh, do we get clarification as to what our proportion of that will be? And six million available, but we can just get an update.
Yes, um, I wanted to say was uh, it's not, it's actually not on the letter, but I did hear the number. I'll get back to you on it.
Okay.
And then for clarity, is that for future expenses or expenses already incurred?
Um, they're going to be using it for PPE and, and uh, equipment and other, other things. Uh, I don't know that it has to be retroactive, uh, cleaning services for uh, furniture. This will assist us in reopening and expanding capacity, so my guess is that it's going to pay for stuff that they've burned through during this.
It's stuff going forward, it's not reimbursable.
Okay.
Is this, is this another one of those purchased by the end of the year, Sheila?
Yes, Joe.
Okay.
Sheila, do you have a number on that of what we're getting?
Um, I don't unfortunately, but I think it's somewhere around, eh, I shouldn't, probably shouldn't say this.
That's alright, you can get back to me, it's not a bit.
Ten, twelve thousand.
Alright. Okay.
Yeah, go ahead for us.
We'll take it.
Let's check on it.
I will, yes.
I'll, I'll get, I'll get back.
I should know that number.
Alright, communication three, Sheila, since you're on the line, this is from Sheila in the mayor's office um, regarding uh, police vehicle maintenance contracts. Can you quickly talk us through this?
Yeah, and I think John um, can pipe in as well. So when you're, when you bid on uh, the police vehicle maintenance uh, contract, you, you have to post a bond. You have to put, you have to put bond money in, um, a check form. And when that bid is awarded, a portion of that money goes back to the bidder. And that's uh, what you're seeing right now. Is a release of that, those funds.
In excess of escrow?
Yes.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Motion by Alderman Mammon, second by anybody? Alderman Cassetti. Any further discussion on this? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Alright, unanimous, unanimously passes, thank you.
Yeah, I have a um, I have a quick uh, question on that.
Too late, hammer pants.
Done, over. Signed out.
Does that?
Over and out, Rivers.
Bye-bye.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Does that apply to the contract that we've already um, approved?
Does the return of the
To get a bond?
It's a bid bond, it gets returned after you award.
Yes.
And then they have to post a performance bond.
Right.
Correct.
Money gets taken from that, that's just.
So are you saying that, yes, it applies to the one, current one? Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, this is just, this is allowing us to return the money to the, to the bidder.
Okay.
The bid bond.
Yeah, bid bond.
Not the performance bond.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. Um, alright. Uh, so then we have the two late communications that I had at the beginning of the meeting. The first one is from me. It's probably easier to read it than it is to summarize it because it's only two lines. Um, at our last meeting, we accepted the resignation from the deputy fire marshal who will be transitioning into a volunteer position. Uh, fire commissioners have already unanimously voted in support of Joseph Kingston III to fill the stipend position of deputy fire marshal. Uh, and it just comes to us then for approval. Uh, so I said, it already went unanimously through the fire commission and uh, there are motion to
I move we approve.
Second.
By Alderman Phipps, second by Alderman Yam. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions, nope, alright, thank you for your support on that. And late communication number two, um, this goes back to uh, I don't think it was last month, maybe two months ago, when we received the um, we received a, a petition from a bunch of residents in the Hughes Circle area of the city. Um, requesting that we um, declare Hughes Circles as a city street. That we kick this to uh, planning and zoning for an eight twenty-four. And late communication two is a letter from the chairman of planning and zoning um, offering a favorable refer, uh, referral for the establishment of Hughes Circle as a city street. Uh, it says Mr. DeLazio uh, also serving as superintendent of public works noted he inspected the street, which is in good shape. Curbs and catch basins are as well. He felt public works could handle adding this street. Uh, Mr. Mariney added his thoughts are positive. All the commissioners were in agreement. And a motion was made by Mr. Holman for a positive referral to the board of aldermen to establish Hughes Circle as a city street. Uh, seconded by Mr. Bettini, all, all were in favor and it carried on, so now this comes to us. Is there a motion to approve this um, request?
Ah, cool.
Charlie?
I'll second.
I, uh, discussion?
Yeah, did you make the motion though, as well?
No.
Oh, no. Motion by Alderman Strowman, a sec, do we have a second? Motion by, or second by uh, Alderman Cassetti, okay, yeah, discussion, go ahead, Charlie.
So I wasn't here when this was going on, so I'm at, my question is, is that road that we're going to take on be, being responsible for plowing?
Yes.
Maintenance? Maintenance?
Yes.
Okay, now.
Utility.
What do we get for it?
Taxes.
So we, we're going to be able to raise this condo's taxes a little bit to make up for the difference?
Not a condo.
This is not a, Hughes Circle's not a condo, it's a, it's a collection of houses as far as I, as far as I understand.
Well, how in the world did it end up being, how did it end up being um, able to be given to this city if it's, it's some kind of a, what do they call that, community?
Homeowner associations kind of deal.
Homeowner association? Is that what it is?
Can I chime in on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Bill.
Um, if I recall, going way back to my planning and zoning days and my feeble recognition of the past, that was an army reserve. Uh, that was army housing way back when. And then, of course, the army left when they took their missiles and um,
Was that Nike?
Huh?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
That's it.
I army. And um, then it, uh, there, there was some, there was some chatter about it when it be, became uh, eligible for uh, actually subdivision treatment in reverse. And uh, I, I couldn't recall the uh, information, but um, apparently uh, they pulled it off and the realtor bought that entire place and sold off individual lots. And never had to do anything with the street because I guess, you know, there was some unusual arrangements made with it. But the street, I, I personally went up on it today the other day, and it looks like a south street.
Yeah.
Yeah. It looks pretty good, so.
Saying the mil, but you're saying the military was, was but it was theirs. And no, and nobody, and nobody ever got any paperwork or anything saying, here, we, we give this to you, we're not interested anymore in it.
It goes back about ten years.
Well, what's that?
I think it goes back about ten years.
What goes back?
You know, when the military sold it. They sold it as a, a unit.
You said they sold the lots, but what did they do with the road?
No, they sold everything, it was the roads and the houses, the whole kit and the boot. I think they sold it as a unit.
Longer than that.
And then the developers.
So the town may already, may already be responsible for it, and we don't even know it.
Well.
They already plow, they do plow and they pick up the trash already, they always have.
Well, they do.
Yes.
They is the city.
I guess.
I wouldn't be surprised if you didn't find out that's already owned by the city.
Well, my, my question, Charlie, is, is that, hey, John, when you uh, looked into this, uh, is there any restrictions when this was developed? Is there any sort of deed restrictions? Because if, if it was a private developer that put it together as a subdivision, was the, was the, was there anything like that? Any restrictions that it says that an HSA is responsible for the road repairs and upkeep and maintenance and things like that, or sidewalks?
And no, nothing that would, would prevent us from, from moving forward.
The same as Woodbridge Approach up where Hoynski and Sovin, they have an association as well, but those are all city streets.
Yeah, but those, that association is for um, for the um, retention pods. They've got some pretty significant retention pods in both locations, and that's why they have an, have an association.
I don't know if we, when you say association, I don't know if we, if you can touch this until the actual, so, somebody that represents the association has, that has the right to do so, offers to give that change hands. I don't.
Well, that triggered this, Charlie. They wrote us a letter saying, we're asking to have the, uh, the residents asked to have the, the city uh, take over the street, so I presumably, I mean, that's, that would be my inclination is that instead of a, instead of a, just accepting the eight twenty-four, I guess, refer this to John and let John make contact and I mean, there's going to have to be.
Title search, can't you do a title search on it, just real quick?
I, I would say all of this would be part of the eight twenty-four recommendation, everything from legal scrutiny to our city planner, logistically commenting on it to diving into issues about the association. And, you know, our thought was that, you know, we're really at the tip of the iceberg with this. You know, why not bring, why not get the eight twenty-four?
I have one comment, uh, question regarding that property. If we make it a city street as opposed to now, that means we're now responsible for sewer maintenance, upkeep and so forth. I'm not really concerned. Well, I am concerned that it's been private property that, that we've been plowing and collecting garbage on. It was never a city street. It was military-owned property. And there was an issue when it was purchased blocking the developer because there's concerns that emergency vehicles and even city trucks that could not fit or turn around in that property. So that was an issue at the time when they went to renovate those homes. That's why it main, it remained the street was actually owned by the developer, and if we take it and the sewers blow up on that street, then we pay for it and now they don't. So I'd like to see some kind of you know, look into the state of the sewers, the property and everything else before we even think about this.
Who pays the taxes on the street now? Because if, if we're saying it's private property, who, who owns the street now and are they paying taxes on it? And do we for, and do we forego that if, if it becomes city property? Is there a lost revenue?
These pe, these uh, owners are all paying city taxes.
They bought like the, the houses.
Lots though, but not for necessarily for the street.
Yeah.
Because if there's no
Yeah, I mean, I thi, I think those are all really good questions, guys. Do the eight twenty-four, more due diligence is needed? And then come back.
Agreed.
So where do we want to refer this to? It's already had the eight twenty-four, it's gone through legal, it's gone through public works. What's your pleasure, guys?
I would think land use, uh,
Yeah, back to building.
The records.
That's right.
I would just supplement, supplement the finding with these questions. Bring the record back to zoning, we'll have staff answer the questions.
Okay.
Which is good, which is the way it should be. That, that's a good back and forth and it gets the, you know, the recommendation supplemented to, to make sure we're making an informed decision.
Well.
Diane, I know you.
Our unofficial historian, do you want to make that motion to uh, refer that?
We have a motion on the floor already.
Yeah, do we want to, Diane, do we want to repeal that uh, original motion? Okay, so motion repealed. And then you, Bill, do you want to make a motion on this?
Yeah, sure, I referred to the land use uh, for uh, supplying the historical um, derivations of the uh, of that whole development. They should have, be able to get at the records. If not, they could probably have to call Joe Lynn Flaherty or somebody from the old crew might know what's going on, but uh, um, yeah, that, that's anyway to do it.
Alright, so, so.
Hey, hold on a second.
Go ahead.
Bill, can you add in a piece in there about the sewers as well as the, the taxes that are being collected, if any, on, on the, on the road itself?
Well, that should, that, that's a engineer, you know, when we, when we adopt roads on, on new stuff, there, there's very specific design criteria and the D'Amico, Freddie D'Amico is the one that would pass judgment on that. I don't think he was uh, involved at all with this, but just from line of sight and what uh, what Mickey says, uh, looks like it's a first-class road. But again, we don't know. We soon would tidy in our sewers. It must be, I don't think there's any septic out there. Uh, that's my guess, but again, land use would be able to determine all of this.
You want to amend the agenda, amend the motion, Tone?
No, it's, 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 it's Bill's motion, so I'm, I'm okay with it. If, if land use is going to run through all of that and we'll be able to tell that, um, you know, from, from the, the current state of the motion, I'm okay with it.
If there's any problem, they're going to find, they're going to continue where we stop. That's.
Fred D'Amico and Dave Blackwell have already been in, they were in on the whole process.
Well, alright, it's probably, it's a nice development up there, they did some nice work on those houses.
Alright, so let's, let's refer this a, as per the motion to land use to supply some of this historical information. This will answer the questions that you guys have and we can hopefully take it back up next month.
Yeah, it sounds, yeah, sure.
Okay. Second by Alderwoman Strowman, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. Alright, perfect, so we'll get back to that. That's the end of the communications. We have, um, let's see, moving on, we have, uh, we have no resignation, uh, resolutions. We have a couple resolutions on the docket here. Um, first resolution one reads, uh, authorizing the creation of sport commissioners. Be resolved that the Ansonia Board of Aldermen authorize the Ansonia Parks and Recreation Commission to appoint sport commissioners for each sport actively played within the city of Ansonia, provided that said sport commissioners are tasked to act solely as liaisons between their designated sport and the Ansonia Parks and Recreation Commit, Commission. So this does not sound like a voting position, just a, you know, uh, sport liaison for each of those.
Can I, I, I ask a question before we even get, get to this. I guess my question is, is that historically, it has always been the president or the vice president or the secretary or the treasurer of the particular uh, youth organization that comes to the, before um, the rec commission and now the parks and rec commission. I guess, why are we trying to have the Parks and Rec Commission appoint someone that may not necessarily be associated with the particular organization?
Exactly.
It doesn't, I, 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 I just, I don't see the, how it meshes. So I don't, I don't know where this is coming from. I don't know, I don't know if this is something that Jeff requested for the Parks and Rec Commission so that, um, but I, I, I guess I'm just looking for a little clarification.
Jeff is here, I believe.
Parks and Rec's commissions proposed this.
Right, but I'm, I'm just wondering, historically, it's always been the president of the youth organization, be it little league soccer, football, um, or the dignity of that person that appears before um, the rec commission. So why are we giving the Parks and Rec Commission the ability to appoint somebody that may not necessarily be associated with the, with the organization itself? I just think it's, it creates contention as opposed to it. It's the understanding that it's going to be the designee of the particular youth organization. They're not an organization. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. I agree.
Do we have anyone that wants to, to speak in support of this as far as, you know, John, do you have any comments on this?
Simply request from the Parks and Rec.
This came from Parks and Rec, correct?
You know, yeah. And I advise that, see, I don't like the idea of any board or commission making its own appointments. So if there's an interest in a group like Parks and Rec making an appointed board underneath it, I, I think it needs to have the authority of this Board of Aldermen to do so. Otherwise you'd have boards and commissions willy nilly appointing their own subboards, not of members of that commission, but you know, you're talking about appointing people out of the blue. I, I think that needs to be overseen by the Board of Aldermen. So exactly what form that takes is really in the Board of Aldermen's court, and I think that's the right way to go. I think they're interested, you know, and that's something for you to decide. Is it something that needs to be limited to just individuals who are already representing those leagues? Is it open to their discretion as to who they appoint? And I really can't speak for the, the Parks and Recs board, other than to say that the issue needs to come in front of the Board of Aldermen as it is now.
Yeah, I, I just don't see, see that being viable because as Joe said, you know, each one from the program, the presidents come in, they give their reports. So I don't see the need for them to appoint anybody else as a liaison to that program if they don't even have nothing to do with the program.
But if they do create a liaison, who's it gonna hurt?
Well, it just creates an extra layer, Charlie. I think is my point is that you're now, i- i- if you have a president of Little League, for example, and you appoint Charlie Stowe as the liaison to Little League and you're not associated with Little League, now the people from Little League have to talk to Charlie Stowe to talk to the Parks and Rec Commission. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense. I, I'm just, just indicated, I did not request this and don't believe the rec report, rec board did. So I, I, I mean, I guess I would just, I would suggest at this point in time, tabling this and just so we can get some more clarification. I just saw Jeff's comment. I mean, that would be my motion to table.
Your second. Second motion by Alderman Yamman to table is a second by Alderman Cassetti. Further discussion on this right now?
I'm actually on Parks and Rec and I was there at the meeting. The reason why you would point a commissioner rather in this, I'm associated with the new board. This isn't the rec commission. This isn't a group of people who have a favorite sport that they're trying to promote. This is Parks and Recreation representing the city, the use of our fields, facilities and so forth, and even funding. So our job isn't necessarily to get involved and tell particular sports what to do or how to do it.
Exactly.
There's nothing wrong with having a representative and saying they're not involved, they're not part of that isn't a minus, it's a plus. But you have an observer, you have someone that's outside of it. They're not worried that their kid's not going to be the pitcher. They're not worried that they're not going to get new equipment for what they want. They're there to perform the function and then just simply report back to us. The Parks and Rec have a lot going on. We're really not interested in the individual politics of each board. That's the reason for having a commission. So that we concentrate on the city and facilities, maintenance, building new things, you know, we're trying to work on things like turf practice fields to save the other things in the city. Important issues. We really don't want to get involved with who doesn't like who, who's mad at so and so, you know, who's fighting at meetings. Let them go to the commissioner for that, if they need a referee. And then they can bring the important issues to the full board.
Well, I guess I would just ask Dan, because when I, you know, with the rec, the Parks and Rec commission is that we work to try to create this board for that exact reason. And I guess I just, I don't know, it creates a level of disconnect from my perspective to have a commissioner that may not necessarily be familiar with the facilities that that youth organization is using necessarily. So I guess that, that, I recognize what you're saying because I understand the scenario. But I guess I would just look at it like the people that are on the fields playing, the people that are using the facilities regularly, and they're a part of the organization are going to know firsthand what the issues are and be able to address them, I think, more succinctly and more readily as opposed to having to go through a commissioner. I just don't want to see anything get lost in translation.
I think the commissioner is a plus because if you're having somebody, I'm, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not going to be at any of these sporting events. I'm going to be at City Hall discussing how to fix the fields or how to improve things. The people that we propose as commissioners, I don't think you'll disagree with any of them. They're good members of the community. They have an interest in these things and they, they want to take part. So in a way, it's, I, that was my first concern too, that we're adding layers. But it's not, at least it's all not. Not going to go to seven different members of a board. They're going to go to their commissioner. And that way it's more face to face. It's straight up rather than the area go around thing with all the different boards of members. They know who they can speak to directly and get action done quickly.
Well, well, you see, here's the thing. They had that before. It didn't work. It, it, it didn't work even when they have commissioners, they still give over to commissioners anyway.
I, I just want to add something. If they're looking for a spokesman to speak as one person to the board, and there's four members of each board, why not just appoint one of them a spokesman? I mean, if that's what this comes down to, it's just one person relaying back and forth to the board. If you got four members, have one of them nominate a spokesman that's going to report back to the board. I don't understand why we need another person.
Absolutely.
If it doesn't work, change it.
Well, I would also just, I, I would, our city clerk just put in a comment that just says that the park, new Parks and Rec Commission has not held an organizational meeting yet. Nor they follow any schedule. So I would just say, I mean, I, I guess I would just look at it like this is that, you know, I'm happy to have this discussion, but it seems like this isn't coming directly from a rec, the, the rec board, Dan. So I don't know if they're, what.
Well, actually, once again, in case anyone forgot, I am on the rec board.
Okay.
Now, we were there and we discussed it. And that was the consensus.
Legally.
When? When, when, when did we all just meet?
All right. So let me, let me interject here for a minute. So we have a motion to table this by Alderman Yamman and second by Alderman Cassetti. I think there's some merit to continuing to discuss this. It seems like there's enough issues that are being pointed out here that this is not something we want to go stuffing through at this point. So I would support the motion to table and would ask who we vote. Vote on this motion and second.
Aye.
Motion to table?
Aye.
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 Uh, anyone, any noes on that?
Oh.
Who's that?
King.
Uh, King, one, one no, King. Any abstentions? All right. So we'll, we'll, I'm sure we'll pick this.
King should be an abstention.
Blackwell?
Yeah, King should be an abstention. No, doesn't he sit on the rec board?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Second, King, no, no noes and the rest.
Doesn't really matter because I'm actually the Alderman appointee, so I am both. So.
No, it doesn't really matter, Dan. You're right.
Whatever makes everyone happy.
Yeah. I'm, I'll be happy. I'll be happy when we're done talking about this.
I think Dan should be a no.
Go.
All right. Moving on. Thank you, guys. We, I'm sure we'll hear that, more on that, more detail. Resolution two is the resolution in support, this is the draft of resolution in support of Valley Police Officers and a repeal of the Connecticut Bill 6004. I'll note that we all received a message from Chief a few months ago regarding the financial impacts and the, and the perceived safety impacts of, of elements of this bill. I saw that Derby had a meeting last night, specific, I think it was last night, specifically talking about the additional costs that this bill is going to, to, just for the body cams, I think was going to be about almost a hundred thousand dollars a year for, for Derby. And we had our own numbers from Chief Cota. So I'm just going to read this resolution and then we can discuss. Resolution in support of Valley Police Officers and the repeal of the Connecticut Bill 6004. Whereas the State of Connecticut General Assembly has passed Bill 6004, a law impacting Connecticut police officers in the communities they serve. Whereas Bill 6004 makes it more difficult for Connecticut police officers to perform their duties and thereby endangers the lives of officers and Connecticut residents. And whereas Bill 6004 modifies the protections of qualified immunity in a manner that exposes police officers acting in good faith to personnel lawsuits that may be otherwise not have been allowed to the detriment of the officers, their families and the municipalities they serve. Whereas Bill 6004 makes it more costly for local police departments to operate in a manner that risks the defunding of police services to the detriment of public safety. And whereas the Ansonia Board of Aldermen desires the General Assembly to pursue police accountability measures in a manner that does not defund or disempower police officers or endanger the community. And whereas the Ansonia Board of Aldermen supports local law enforcement and desires to increase support of police departments in Connecticut and in the Valley area. Therefore, be resolved that the Ansonia Board of Aldermen call on Governor Lamont and the Connecticut General Assembly to act immediately to repeal Bill 6004. And further, the Ansonia Aldermen calls upon its state delegation, including State Senator George Logan and State Representative Cara Rochelle to introduce legislation for the repeal of Bill 6004. Before we have any discussion on this, is there a motion to go forward with this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to table it.
I make a motion to, 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 what did you call, uh, I lost the word. Appeal. Repeal.
Okay. So we have a motion to repeal. Do we have a second by Alderman Mamon? And we have a motion, second motion to table this.
I had a mo, I don't know if anybody seconded it. Did they? The table?
Is there a second to motion to table this? All right. Is there any, oh, a second by.
I agree.
We have, we have dueling motions or do we have to repeal the first one?
No, I think, I don't think my, did, did my motion pull a second?
I think that, Diane, did you second?
Yes.
All right. I need to request assistance from Corporation Counsel here. Can we, can we have dueling motions? No.
No.
Take them up sequentially.
Sequentially. Okay. So.
Turn citizen repeals.
Uh, okay. So we have motion by Charlie and seconded by Tony to accept the resolution. Uh, we might have to put, put our hands up on this one. And I'm trying to, motion to.
Call for a discussion, I would think.
I think he's right.
Okay. Yeah, let's go with discussion. Maybe someone, maybe someone will change their, their, their mind or pull their motion. Okay. Yeah, go ahead. We have the motions. Go ahead.
All right. This is a hot potato, as we all know, you know, it's a hot potato.
I thought I appealed it first. Trish, where are you? I think I beat him to the punch. I, my draw was quicker than his. Go ahead, Mr. Phipps.
Yeah. And anyway, this, this motion is, is, as we know, it's a hot potato in the whole country. The, 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 the issue of police, whatever. And we know that this was adopted in Hartford under, I call it extreme duress. In fact, I, I had, I was talking with Cara Rochelle and I expressed to her my own disagreement with it. I didn't like when the bill came out of Hartford and what it was trying to do. And, and I talked to her about it and reminded her that she approved it or she voted along party lines and so forth. And then as I, as I talked about it, I find out that there's some good parts to the bill. And there are some parts in that bill that have got to be adjusted, maybe eliminated. And I expressed that very strongly to Cara and she agrees with me. That's why she's explained that a lot of the implementation of the different parts of the bill will not be until next summer, 2021. And there's time to fix a lot of the ones that are broken. It's understandable that there are good parts of the bill. And the object is not to try and blow the thing out of the water because I don't think it would happen and it'll just make Ansonia look like a Danny Downer. I think the important thing is to get our message out, to get it fixed.
I guess, I guess.
We don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater.
You know, that's.
Hold on, hold on, Sheila. Can I interject here? So knowing that there's pieces of a bill that aren't good that are going in next year, that's an open admission that, you know, it's, it's broken right out of the box. So why would we support something knowing that it's broken out of the box with a promise of, of a potential later fix, which very well may never come?
Right.
And why, and why would you vote, why would you vote on a, on a bill that has problems? Legislators have nothing but time on their hands to look at these bills. So if there were problems to begin with, why would you vote on it?
But here's the thing, and then I, and I'll just, I'm just going to add this in, okay, is that this bill was rushed through in a special session. There was no time for public input. Okay. They could have done this in regular session next year and addressed these issues. Instead, this matter was brought up during special session, pushed through. Okay. So regard, regardless of whether or not there's a promise to fix things later. Okay. This is a bad bill.
Within an election.
That needs to be repealed. And if they want to pass better legislation, Bill, next year during special, during regular session, when everybody has the ability to weigh in, okay, when the police have the ability to go there during public session and address the legislature and have their comments heard for the record and to be considered by everyone involved. But that's not what we had here. What we had is limited input, rushed through, okay, for the purposes of an election coming. And that's bad politics all the way around.
Can we look at it? We're just looking at what's best for Ansonia. We don't have a community that's against our police department. So we need to make our decision based on what's good for us as every other community is going to do. So if we're sending something up there saying we would like this repealed, again, you're going to need everybody to do the same thing, but we can't make the decision based on what's happening in the rest of the state. What is good for us here?
Fair point.
So, so wait a minute. So let me interject for a sec. Because what's interesting is we're talking politics now. When we talk about what's best. First of all, first of all, this came up and you guys tend to go wrong. Because last month, we had someone who was politicking. Sorry, I don't mean to offend anybody. A politician, a person who came and asked us to support their platform. That's one thing. And that was about that. And all of a sudden now, we now have this resolution. My take is if there's a problem with what our legislatures have done with our, no matter what they are, Republican, Democrat, Independent, Unaffiliated, why can we not have a discussion with all involved, which would be our state senator and our representative? Talk about what our issues are. And then let them know how we feel because I'm getting two sides of the story.
The cart before the horse, that's what should have been done before that this law ever got talked about is they should have went to the.
Diane, I agree with you that we.
They thought. That was the first thing they should have done. Now it's ass backwards. We're talking about what's happening after the fact.
My thing is, my thing is.
Saying try and work together, not try and do all this divide and stuff. So all I'm saying is that if we sit down and talk with them and just say, hey, look, this, somebody explain this because I'm hearing one side of the story and I'm hearing another side of the story. I don't know which one is right and which one is wrong.
Well, look at the bill. Just look at the bill. You can see what's wrong. Look at the bill. It's awful.
My thing is, is that before that, that vote should have even happened. Our state representative should have came before the board, come to an Alderman meeting to get some feedback before you even voted on this bill.
Exactly.
But that never happened. It never. It never happens. We hard, one time, one time she been to a meeting. So.
And I, and I, wait a minute, this wasn't just, it was both of them.
Well, in, in the defense of that, this, um, resolution does ask both Senator Logan and State Rep Cara Rochelle to, to introduce a repeal. We want, we want both of them on.
Senator Logan voted against the bill.
He was a no, yeah, originally.
But we have a conversation.
Charlie, go ahead. All right, Charlie, go ahead.
Senator Logan will go.
When I get gone, I would like Mr. Miller, Kurt Miller, to interject also. If he's, if he's here, says he's here. Kurt, you here?
I'm here.
Okay. One of our main concerns as being a, a small community is, because of this virus, there's money that is being spent in, allocate federal money, there's state money, there's a, and we're, we're living in an emergency like every day. So what happens is, is we're getting pushed on of what we're supposed to be in helping the state invest money with to go through this, this virus. In the end, we're going to have to be careful that the state doesn't just figure when this is over with, that they're just going to leave all of those, the money that they're drawing from us, which will be a tax increase. We will have a tax increase that we will never be able to get out from under. Does anybody understand what I'm saying? Do you, you get this?
That's inevitable, Charlie, that's coming anyway.
Kurt, what do you think, Kurt? I want to hear what Kurt, Kurt's got to say.
Well, you know, if, i- it depends on what the state ultimately ends up doing. And if these turn into unfunded mandates, that's going to put added pressure on towns and cities. But I'm not 100% sure how much of that has been determined as of yet. And one of the concerns with these bills is, um, while they're trying to solve a problem, and you know, you can argue over the merits of the problem all you want, but at the end of the day, by solving this problem, it's putting pressure on all municipal budgets. Because if you look at things like, um, you know, the body cams, car cams, the stores, a lot of towns and cities don't have those. And Sony's a little bit ahead of the curve with stuff like that. Uh, you know, it's just credit to you folks. But that's going to put added expenses on, particularly when they don't have a full definition yet of the understanding of FOI with things like this. So how long do you have to maintain these records? Um, how easy do you need to make it for people to have access? So on and so forth, so, you know, there's, yeah, there's a lot of concerns about that. So, you know, so to your point, um, it's not just this bill, but there are many other bills that have, that have been sent down by, uh, by the state of Connecticut that put unfunded mandates and put pressure on towns and cities.
And that's another one of the problems of doing this in a special sess-, session, is not seeing the fiscal note associated with the bill to know the financial impact, to have weigh-in from CCM, to have weigh-in. And that's, that's the issue with rushing this through, is not recognizing there's a problem and it's open to debate, which is why I agree with you, Diane, that more people should be involved in the process and having the conversation. But that's not what transpired here. That's not what transpired here at all. And now we're dealing with a bill that has financial impacts, but we don't know how much. We don't know when it's going to impact us. Um, I fully support a repeal of this bill. Do it the right way.
Why don't we repeal it when we find out, wow, what's really going to impact us?
Why don't we repeal it now and allow people to have input from, from the beginning of the process? The right way, the way it should have been done in the first place.
Exactly.
That's who you talk to.
Trish, is Trish here?
I'm here.
Okay, I know you have internet.
I have, yeah, it comes and goes.
Uh, so we have two motions, and I'm, I'm hoping that we can, uh, vote on them both and see how this plays out. Seems to make sense, seems to make sense to do Bill's tabling first and vote on that. There was a motion to table by Bill, second by Diane. We'll vote on that and, uh, and then we'll, we'll approach the second one. So, um, I don't know how, you want to do maybe roll call on this so that we can keep track of names? I can't even tell who's here anymore.
I can do that, I just, um, wonder if you're supposed to take them out of order like that, and that would be up to Corporation Counsel. I, I thought, I thought a motion to table stopped all discussion, and that was what you had to vote on. Am I wrong, John? He muted, there he is.
John, are you here?
Given the trajectory that we're on, I would take the motion to table first.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, do you want to roll?
Yeah, please. So motion to table. And then, and then if, if needed, uh, we'll pick up the second one.
That was by Alderman Phipps, so I'll call his name first, motion to table.
Yes.
Alderman Phipps, and then Alder. Stroman?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Stowe? Hey, Charlie. Alderwoman Tar? No. Alderman Cassetti? Alderman Cassetti, motion to table?
No.
He said no.
Said no, okay. My internet comes in and out. Alderman Janetti? Alderman Yalman? Hello?
He said no.
Okay, like I said, it comes and goes. Alderman Rivers?
No.
Alderman Mamon?
I'm a no.
President Schuer?
No.
Alderman Blackwell?
He said no.
No.
Okay, so you have three yes?
Did you get Frank?
Four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Trish, did you ask Frank DeLibro?
I did.
Oh, you did.
I did, and Tony said he said no, am I wrong?
You're right.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear you say Frank.
I did.
Oh, I didn't hear her say Frank, I thought that was for Alderman Blackwell.
Yeah, she's pointing in and out, in and out.
Frank, what is your vote?
No.
Okay, so it stays the same, so three yes to table and 10 no.
Okay, so the motion to table failed. Can we do the same? Now we have a motion by Charlie to accept and a second by, uh, Tony, um, Mamon. Can we do the same roll call?
Yeah. Okay. Alderman Stowe?
Now, when I say yes, that means I'm for the repeal.
This is.
To adopt the resolution.
This is yes to no, Charlie.
Yeah, here we go.
There you go.
Yes.
Okay, and who seconded that?
I did, Mamon.
Mamon.
Okay, Alderman Mamon?
Yes, to repeal it.
All right, Alderman King? Alderman King?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Okay, Alderman Phipps?
No.
Alderwoman Tar? Alderman Cassetti?
Yes.
Alderman Janetti?
Yes.
Alderwoman Stroman?
No.
Alderman Yalman?
Yes.
Alderman Rivers?
Yes.
Alderman Schuer? Alderman Blackwell?
Yes.
Alderman DeLibro?
Yes.
All right, 10 yes, two no, and one abstention.
All right, so a motion passes, um, for resolution number two. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, resolution.
Where's the resolution going to go, Mr. President?
That goes to the town clerk, as far as I know. It gets dated, it gets signed by the, it gets signed by Beth and the mayor. And, and then gets sent to, uh, the state, to the government. Correct?
Yes, state delegation.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Um, I have, um, one thing that I want to go on, um, record. Not to go back, but I'm supposed to be the chairman of the parks and recs, and I hadn't heard nothing about this. There hasn't even been a meeting. So I don't know where this came from.
Resolution one, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, you're talking about 8:30 tonight, all right, I got you.
I'm just saying, I mean, you know.
I'm going to, I'll rewind the tape.
And I'm the commissioner, so I'm just saying.
No, you are the chair of that, of that, so, of our, of our subcommittee. So thank you for that comment. Albeit highly out of context, but thanks.
Dead horse.
Yeah. So, uh, next up is resolution number three. This is, um, a, says that these salary and wage be adopted effective October 13th, 2020, for the IT manager. This comes from the, uh, the mayor's, uh, office. A current salary of $30,000 with a new salary of $35 per hour. Can we have someone from finance speak to this?
Oh, that was what? A 35 an hour? You say?
That's what it said. Can someone speak to this? Rich? Or Kim?
Abel.
Okay. Okay, what, I guess the issue here, Dave used to be, uh, hourly employee at one point in time when he started working here. And, uh, somewheres along the line, we, we converted him to a, a salary position, which was for 19 and a half hours. The problem has become that he's working much more than the 19 and a half hours and not being paid for, uh, and a lot of, a myriad of duties, including the cultural stuff and running different kinds of programs for the city in addition to all of the IT services that he's been performing. So, um, there was a discussion by a number of the, the mayor and his staff, and we wanted to put him back to a, an hourly position. And basically, I think it was from, maybe from a month ago, when we had the meeting that we had, uh, actually indicated we wanted that to be effective. Uh, but to put him at an hourly rate again with up to 29 hours. He's only going to target the 19 and a half, which is what he's normally tries to do. Uh, but when he does have to work an extra 10 hours in a week, at least he'll be compensated for it. His current rate puts him at around $33 an hour, I believe, on, based on the salary that he's currently at. So it's not a big variation in the hourly rate, but he's been working many, many hours and not being paid for. So that was the impetus for this request, I believe.
Okay. Rich, can I ask a question? So, um, are there, is, is he in the system as a part-time employee? Or it's on, is it, would it retain? Like, is there a limit to that as far as the number of hours you actually can work as a part-time employee?
I believe there's been a discussion and, and as the same with arms, I believe the, the part-time is 29 hours or less, is what we've utilized as, as that part-time cutoff.
Can I raise, has the Salary Committee of the BOA seen this?
No.
As far as I know, I had suggested, I thought maybe we had, but I don't know.
Can we make a referral to send this to the Salary Committee for consideration and make sure it's in, on par with where it should be?
Second.
Would this go to Salary Appeals?
No, the, the Salary Committee of the Board of Aldermen.
Yeah, that's probably where it should be. I didn't know if you had met or not.
No, I hadn't.
On that board.
I'm on the board too.
So there's a motion to, by Yalman and a second by Rivers to refer this to the Alderman, uh, Salary Committee?
Yes.
Subcommittee.
Subcommittee, uh, there, is there any further discussion on this?
Just like to know.
Oh, wait a minute. Who's on it? Um, I can tell you.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So, Rich, if he's working over the 19 and a half hours now, it's, it's kind of, uh, you know, a freebie that he's working?
Well, yeah, he's a salary position currently. So you get to work as many hours as you like when you're salaried, and you only get paid for what your salary level is. But it was originally set up at, uh, 19 and a half hours for that salary number.
So can we, at the very least, while we kick this over to that Salary Committee, can we at least turn him back into hourly, maybe at his current rate to, to at least make sure the guy's compensated for the hours that he's working? And then we could always review, or the Salary Committee can review the addition to the, uh, to the, to the, to the hourly rate?
I would recommend that we leave him where he is currently, but we make the approval retroactive to the date that we discussed this in the mayor's office, which I think was September. I can go back and find, but it was probably about 30 days ago that we discussed this. And I would just make the rate retroactive back to then, and we can calculate in payroll and give him adjustment for whatever that is.
Yeah, but the, the, it's, it's noted here that it's effective October 13th for the new rate.
I'm not sure why that was put in there. The original discussion with the mayor's office was to make it effective the day we discussed that, I believe. Totally up to your board what you want to do, but I'm relaying what the discussions were that we had.
I just want to make sure our subcommittee weighs in, make sure that it's on par with where it should be. And then if they make a recommendation that it be retroactive to a certain date, then we can consider that at that time. I just think our subcommittee should be looking.
An answer to the question, I can't, I, I, I shouldn't say I, I'm not really there, but, um, can't really, he's a salaried employee, to pay him hourly would go against the, the norm. So that's all my recommendation is, I can't just arbitrarily make a change and say, let's pay him hourly even though he has salary.
All right, so I think this, the document, at least that we have in front of us, has enough warts on it that it probably warrants going to the, uh, Salary Committee, which is, I'll, I'll refresh you guys, Dan King, you're the chair, Chicago Rivers and Charlie. So.
Wait, is, is the request to not turn him to hourly? Or is the request to put a new salary figure in there?
My request is to have the Salary Committee make a recommendation, Tony.
Thanks, Joe, for the third time.
And then they can come back to us.
Just trying to move it along.
Thanks, Joe.
Motion in a second to, uh, do we, to, uh, to refer this to the Subcommittee? All favor.
Aye.
Opposed. Abstentions. All right, thanks, I think.
Can I ask a question, since we're talking salaries?
Yeah.
Um, on the new position that we have, which is actually Kurt's position, um, did we do this? Did, did we approve? A form like this, we did?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I don't remember, I'm just asking.
The whole Board of Aldermen did it.
Yeah.
The who?
The whole board voted on it. Instead of a Salary Committee that been going back to the full board, it just went from the full board right, right on.
Yeah, if you remember, Diane, you nominated, um, Tony as the, as the Finance Chair to rep us, and then it came to the full board and we voted on it.
Okay, all right, I just, this is for someone, I look like I've seen a form like this, that's all, okay.
Stop watching them cowgirls.
Hey, 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 hey.
All right, so we are done with, uh, resolutions. Those went really smooth. Move on to, uh, appointments. We have one, uh, suggested appointment from the mayor. Your Board of Aldermen, pursuant to my powers under the City Charter and Code, I hereby submit the following appointments to the Police Building Committee, Michael Marsnick, 6 Dahlia Lane, Seymour, Connecticut, 06483. We have a motion to approve this.
Um, oh.
Motion by Alderman Cassetti, second. Second, Alderman Rivers, any discussion?
Yes, discussion?
Yes, please, go ahead, Bill.
I, I know, uh, Corporation Counsel will say, uh, it's, it's our call, but once again, we're looking at putting somebody on a commission that doesn't live in the town. And, um, item number one, item number two, did the Police Commission, uh, you know, the Building Committee ask for another member? They've already got eight, I think. Uh, I assume they're all together, I can't prove that because there are no minutes to refer to. I don't even know if they exist anymore. There's no proof of it. All we have to do is work on rumor, and the one rumor that we have is that they're screwing up the, the, uh, old timer's place. And it's just a rumor, but I think that got sort of clarified tonight. So I don't know why this fellow, I mean, he's an architect, I know, So I don't know why this fella, I mean, he's an architect, I know, but why he's getting promoted for the commission? I mean, I'd like to ask the commission what they're doing and telling us directly what's, what's happening rather than muddying the waters with another person.
Maybe Seymour, Seymour wants to give something to us for the future shooting.
Well, there you go.
I don't.
You have a situation here where you have an architect who does have input into this project already. He's, in fact, the individual that did the original plans for the senior center. And the thought is this will help bring the two projects together, number one, as the senior center is going in the same building as the police station. Helpful to have the individual who contributed to the senior plan that was accepted by the senior commission being on the board, right? So bringing the two projects together, but also someone that does have a lot of knowledge to bring to the overall project to make sure, of course, that we get the project done and make the most out of the taxpayer money that we have. And we, our aim here is not to borrow additional sums. It's to get the job done with the money we have. And we have an opportunity here for a bigger senior center than ever imagined, and that's obviously gonna come with some, some planning. We want to make sure the right people are there to help plan. And we think this local business owner, who has already had a big say in, in part of the project, is a good person to, to be here on that board.
He has over thirty years of project oversight experience, has managed multi-million dollar projects all across the state of Connecticut. And there isn't anyone with that kind of knowledge or expertise. And he can only help, so, and it's a volunteer basis. Typically, you would pay a firm to be an owner's rep or to, to have oversight over a project where we have a person who's volunteering to help. The bill, the police building committee has been meeting publicly and has had minutes to their meetings. We've even had the public at our meetings over the past two years. And, and continue, we continue to meet with Vance and Construction, bi-weekly meetings on the progress of the police, police department. So there's, there's been numerous meetings. And then
we can certainly. Post it on the Antonia's website. I know that it used to be.
Yeah, they used, they did, Diane. I'm not, I'm not sure if they're up there, if they're still up there or they're continuing to be up there. I'll check. I do not know.
Um, Bill, I, I will say that as a member of the thing, you know, being part of the executive board of the, of the senior commission, it's only a plus for us to have Mike Marsnick be a part of, of that committee. Actually, I've been pushing for someone to be there to represent us on that commission. And I think Mike is a good person for us to have on there.
Um, and, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, um, he helped you with the design and it was for free?
Yes. Pro bono. Beginning, in the beginning, he gave us some pro bono. I know there was some more work that he did, so when he did that work with Sheila, and I'm not sure what happened there. But I, he, he did do pro bono work for us in the very beginning. Yes.
If it's free, it's for me. Sign the man up.
I'll just, I'm just gonna note that this is not a commission, you know, as you traditionally would look, or even, even like long standing committees. This is a building committee that was put together for this project specifically. So it doesn't really fit under our eighteen-hundred-and-twenty charter or whatever, as far as I could see, but I, I do appreciate the, the, the new name that came out of this discussion, which is Old Timers Place. I don't know if that's gonna have I don't know if that's gonna have any legs, Bill, but we can pass it on to the getting right on that. But do we, any other discussion on this? Thank you, Diane, for piping in on that. Any other discussion?
The only thing, Josh, that I would like to just shut my mouth on is that, you know, the, the rumors that, and rumors are, are just that, rumors. They may have credence, they may not. But as far as I'm concerned, there's not another nickel coming from the town fathers to the police building. Not another nickel. And we do expect to have a senior center finished and on the same turnkey as the key for the police station. So building commission, hear me loudly. As far as I'm concerned, get her done. And how about putting some minutes up on the board? Because the last minutes I saw were probably back before COVID.
Thank you. Thank you and heard, heard well. All right, so we have the mayor's nomination for the police building committee, Mike, Michael Marsnick. We, we have, do we have a motion to, we had the first, yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Me.
One abstention.
We knew that, Bill.
Yeah, all right.
One of these days.
One of these days we'll get you.
Yep.
All right. Moving on, we have no ordinance. Okay, so we have new business. There are, this is the, the storefront, the facade program. We had three applications in our packet. John, can you speak to this? Or Sheila, either one of you or both?
Yes.
This is under new business? So.
Before we do, guys, before we do that.
Yes.
At our last meeting, we formed, a committee was formed, and I know I was on it and Tony was on it. And I would assume, because we're a committee, we were supposed to be, we were supposed to be reviewing these applications.
Yes.
And then coming back to the board with recommendations. So I, I, I'm, I'm not sure how, why this is here right now. We had a meeting.
Is that a motion to refer this to the unknown named subcommittee?
Yeah, it's the facade committee. It's myself, Tony Mamone and Diane. However, I think part of the issue is those applications we have are not complete. There's, there's missing information there. But John, can you speak to this or Sheila?
Yeah, there are.
You know, we refer it to the, to that committee as well, but I, I don't think the, we have all the information there to even have a meeting.
We're struggling to get all of the correct information from the applicants, and we figured we put on what we have right now just to kind of show where we are and to make a call. But the idea was to give the completed applications to the subcommittee as discussed.
But we were actually hoping for a pending approval, you know, pending the, the necessary documentation. I guess, you know, it's, it's good to have a subcommittee, and I, I appreciate that. And, and I, and I know you would, you know, take your time looking at these and, and going through them. I just, I just want to remind you, the purpose of this facade loan application is to get the money moving and out onto the street. So the quicker we do that, the, the better it is for the business owners and the better it is for the city. And so we.
We understand, but I just, we just got the, we just got, I mean, it was Tony and Josh got it before me.
And I just. Say, Diane, you haven't made a decision yet? I'm just joking.
We haven't seen the sidelines to the program until the other day, when I asked.
And we're waiting for, we're also waiting for additional forms. Some of the forms are missing from the applicant's application, which doesn't usually happen, but did happen in, on these, with these applications. So we're gonna get those applications together. We'll get, I guess you guys are gonna meet, the subcommittee's gonna meet. And if we could do this as expeditiously as possible, I would really appreciate it.
No, I, I mean, I, go ahead.
I just make a motion that when the application is complete.
Yes, sir.
Committee, and then it comes to us.
Yeah. I mean, you are the subcommittee, right? The board, you're, you, the Board of Aldermen is the ultimate deciding factor. So it just.
I, I mean, I think that this is an economic development piece. I feel like the city can act on it once it's complete and it gets, gets like, personally, my thought was you guys were going to work with the three applicants that we have there. Get the applications completely filled out. Get them to us quickly. We would, we would recommend them to you, and then you would act on, you know, disseminating, disseminating any funds that were awarded. I didn't think it would have to come back again. We're talking about small amount of money for, you know, a sign or.
Our, our economic development director should be able to sign off on that.
Right.
Okay.
I feel like the, the subcommittee should be able to give, give that to, directly to, back to economic development and be done with it. But that was my thought on it.
Yeah, that sounds good.
So can we vote to, to, for city staff to complete the applications with, with the, the three applicants listed under new business? Get them to the subcommittee, and we will then circle it back to to economic development for administration.
Motion.
Working by Rivers. Do we have a second on that?
What are we deciding to do, not to do anything?
Yes, of course.
Reveal by Cassetti. No, gonna do everything. What do you mean by do, do nothing?
Well, that's what you said. The course of action will be for other people to do things and then do them. And they're not coming back here.
You want us to come back for three thousand dollars? Or would you, or do you want us?
Well, it's fifteen, fifteen thousand, it looked like.
Well, that's in ours, isn't it?
The guidelines say two thousand dollars. They could ask for what they want. But the guidelines that I got said two thousand dollars was the max.
Well, one of them was five thousand.
We increased, we increased the, the max to five thousand. Diane is right. It was initially two thousand, but it is now five thousand.
Well, that's not what I got, Sheila. What I received says two thousand.
What do you have?
You know, that may be the, the original version before a resolution by the board that increased the limit.
Okay.
So Steve Giovanni had some, had some detail, Relish had a considerable amount of detail. Saint Sebastian Club, I have no clue what they want except to hand out.
The information was certainly not complete.
The applications are complete, I think.
Right for decision. What I, what certainly could be done is staff will be in touch with the applicants to make sure they have complete applications. Then the question is, do we want to have a subcommittee meeting at that point?
Yeah, quickly. That's why I kept it small. It's three people, in and out.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I don't want to, I don't, I'm not gonna act on an application that is not complete. I mean, at least, if you're asking for money, you can at least fill out the application fully.
I, I think we should be able, it's, it's filled out enough that we can move it on into the hands of the economic development director, and she can finish up the application and let them go. And then we can, we can see what she did next meeting and go, yep, that's great.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're asking for money, the least you could do is turn in a complete.
I just said that. You're gonna, you're gonna have.
These were, these were work and process kind of applications that were done. So I, I don't want to beat the businesses up over this. So John kind of led it into it to say these were, you know, their first submission. So they need some guidance to figure them out. Let, let's just, I would say, cut it at that point. John, Sheila, whoever, reach out to the businesses, get the applications completed in full, and then I would say bring it back to the subcommittee.
Okay.
Sheila, it also looked like some of them didn't have the same forms. So I would make sure that they all, you know, filled out the same information.
Okay. And we'll, we'll get you, we'll get you everything that's current, too.
Okay.
All right. So do we do anything on that, or are we just gonna?
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for everyone.
Do we vote on that?
I'm, I'm just wondering why, again, we wasted ten minutes of my life I'll never get back. Right, this is like a meeting inside a meeting.
Hey, wait till Chicago brings up something from an hour ago.
Literally discussing what somebody might do. That'd be like me going to Bank of America, you know, I might apply for a loan. Can you spend a lot of time talking about it and look into it?
That's worse.
Let them fill out the paperwork. When they got the paperwork filled out, bring it into City Hall, follow the process. Does the process in place? What are we discussing? Fill out your paperwork.
This was the meeting before the meeting, Dan.
Yeah.
I mean, basically, talk about cart before the horse. I mean, we're not even, the horse is gone. It's gone.
All right.
Lot of, lot of horses here tonight.
All right.
So are we done with this?
We better be.
All right.
Like a dead horse.
Moving on.
Are they sending the motions that around the table?
Are, are we gonna, what, what are we doing with this?
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
So we have a motion or no?
We had a motion in a second to, to do some convoluted plan that I came up with, but.
What is convoluted? That's what we used to do.
That was good. It was good. It was good, Josh.
Whose motion is it?
Was mine. Oh, well, actually, Chicago made the motion.
If you repeal it, I'll put it back up there.
Who'll repeal it?
Repeal. Motion to move on.
Repeal. Go ahead.
All right, I make a motion to table communication number three to get completed applications and then will be referred to the subcommittee.
Motion.
Thank you.
I come by Alderman Cassetti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sheila, abstentions? All right. Moving on.
Opposed.
Yeah, that's right. Old business? Nothing? Anything that we, thank God, no. All right. We move on to executive session. Do we have a motion to move into executive session tonight?
Motion. Second.
Motion by who? Who made that?
Rivers.
Rivers and second by Janetti. All right, so I'll just go in order that's on the sheet.
How about motion to come out of executive session?
Oh, yeah.
On the record.
Second.
Come out of second, executive session, Yalman, second by Cassetti, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we have three items from executive session. I'll take them in order on the sheet on the matter of, number one, PMA Properties versus City of Antonia.
Motion to authorize Corp Counsel to proceed as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Okay. Number two is.
You gotta do the vote.